Okay, I'm gonna call it at 6:30. Board of Directors' regular meeting, traffic club municipal utility district number one. We do have a quorum present and we're gonna go right into workshop session, is that correct?
Yes. Good evening, directors. Tonight, we have Raoul with Half &amp; Associates. He's gonna give you all an update on our emergency planning efforts that we've been working on over the last year or so roughly. It all started with EPA's mandated risk and resiliency assessment, which then went to emergency response planning, emergency preparedness planning, and then we went a little extra and went ahead and created a business continuity plan. So with you three new board members coming on, I felt that it was relevant not only for us to show implementation of this plan to you all and to TCQ and EPA, but also to let you all know what we've done and what preparedness we have in place. So with that being said, Raoul, if you won't mind.
Just a second, I already made an air. Today's June 20th, 2022. Yeah, just wanna get that in there.
Great, alright. Thank you very much, board, for having me. Good evening. My name is Raoul Orozco and I'm with Half Associates. And as Alan mentioned, I'll be providing a summary of the resilience planning efforts that we've undertaken for the past about year and a half. So let's get started. Just to give an overview of what we'll be talking about today, we'll be talking about the American Water Infrastructure Act of 2018, and then looking forward to 2021 with Senate Bill Three and the Emergency Preparedness Plan requirement, as well as a little bit further, the Business Continuity Plan, and then giving you guys an updated utility resilience index. So first of all, we've got America's Water Infrastructure Act, or AWIA. This was passed back in 2018, and it was an update based on the Bioterrorism Act of 2002, which, as we all know, came after the events of 9/11. And the Bioterrorism Act was focused a little bit more on terrorist threats and how to deal with those, but the AWIA expands the scope of this act and brings in more of an all-hazards approach, considering natural threats as well as malevolent threats to the nation's utilities. So every community water system with a population of 3,300 or more was required to create and come up with a risk and resilience assessment, as well as an emergency response plan. The due dates for those being June 30th and December 31st. We met the due dates by a good margin for both of those. So first of all, in the process was the creation of a utility resilience index, and otherwise known as the URI. So the URI was, is a measurement that we use to determine a utility's ability to recover and respond appropriately to any threats that it might come across. And this URI calculation came from 12 indicators that you see on the left side of your screen. The district performed exceptionally well on many of these, but chose to go a little bit further and try to increase and meet higher standards on three of them, which are the Emergency Response Plan, mutual aid and assistance, as well as the Business Continuity Plan portion. After running the weighted utility resilience index calculation, we came up to a URI of 50%, which is perfectly in line with many of the district's peers and regional sort of comparables when it comes to the URI percentage. Then we went to the Risk and Resilience Assessment, or RRA, which is focused on all aspects of the utility, including risks, both malevolent and natural, infrastructure, and operations and maintenance. The first part of that was a threat asset pairing exercise, which involved identifying all of the district's most critical facilities and possible threats that might come up, that they might come up against. And then after that, we monetized, we created a monetization of risks based on a calculation of revenue for the utility. So we decided which of these threat asset pairs would pose the highest threat to the utility, and then provided a set of recommendations to be able to deal with all of those threats. And that process ended before June 30th, as stated previously, and then we moved on to the Emergency Response Plan, which is most, more focused on, I've lost my presentation. Okay, there it is. So it was more focused on the response side of it, instead of calculating what sort of risks a utility might face. So this also took an all-hazards approach, and the ERP was meant to be a nexus for context and response procedures of all types for all sorts of threats. As you can see, those are some of the portions of the plan. So that, in all, concluded in the winter of '21. And in between that process, we had winter storm Yuri, as you guys may know. Then the state passed this unfunded mandate that all utilities were very upset about. So it was just an additional sort of compliance requirement that came after the winter storm, and all affected utilities were to create an emergency preparedness plan. This was focused more on ensuring that utilities were able to provide backup power in the event of power loss of the power grid. So the EPP includes a description of the water system, as well as alternative power option choices. So the district was able to choose from 14 different power option choices, and they went with a permanent generator, portable generators, the designation of critical load facilities for their most critical facilities, and then, as well as proving that the utility had enough storage capabilities to meet the demand come an emergency. As Alan mentioned before, the mud went a step further after all of these requirements, and went with a Business Continuity Plan, which is more focused on the business side of things, business resumption, business resilience, and more financials. And that's where sort of Stephen came in in the conversation with us. So the Business Continuity Plan was based on recovery of critical business functions to ensure that customers continued receiving the water that they needed, and then in turn, the mud would continue receiving the revenue from its customers. So there was a high priority placed on safety of employees and visitors, and many of the key steps included in identifying critical operations, key suppliers, inventory, which included hardware as well as software, and then alternate operations locations, as well as resumption and continuity strategies. So after all of this transpired over the course of the past 18 months, we went back and looked at the initial utility resilience index, and then we updated it based on what we had accomplished. So now we had an emergency response plan that was able to be enacted, and then we had established mutual aid and assistance partners throughout the region, as well as the completion of a Business Continuity Plan. And this resulted in a utility resilience index of 73%, a jump of 23%, which is the highest of any of our clients, of our 10 clients that we worked with here in the DFW And that'll conclude our presentation, and I'll take any questions that you guys might have.
Anyone have any questions? I just wanna note that during the 2021 storms, we were one of the few cities around or towns that continued to provide water. So, you know, applaud the staff and the manager for using backup systems and watching our flow, so.
That's right.
Any other questions?
Yes. You mentioned you have 10 clients in the DFW area?
That's right.
How do your non-clients, I assume this is public domain information, how do your non-clients rate? And what is a, 73% sounds like it's an outstanding achievement, but is there a higher level of achievement?
So based on the assessments that the EPA provided and the averages that were undertaken throughout the URI process, a lot of clients graded between the 50 and 60% mark. So grading 50 was not uncommon at the beginning of the process. And then after that, clients rated between 55 and 63-ish, so you guys were a whole 10% above the average.
Fort Worth.
We didn't work with Fort Worth. We worked with more smaller clients.
And Raoul, if I'm not mistaken through our conversations, if we're able to make the interconnect or the emergency connection with the city of Southlake, our URI could go up further, correct?
Yes, so since the URI is a weighted assessment, having an interconnect with a utility, like you mentioned, Southlake, is, I believe, the second or the third highest weighted of all the indicators. So I predict that it would increase it by another 3% to 5%.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the workshop session number two, new director orientation by district legal counsel relating to Texas law and legal requirements governing conduct and affairs of the Board of Directors of the district.
Thank you, Raoul, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Raoul, if you'd like to give this presentation.
Good evening.
Thank you, Raoul.
Hey, you too.
All right. Board, if it's okay with you, I may do it here, I've been sitting for a couple hours, it's okay with you. For some of you, I've given this presentation before. I don't think there was a PowerPoint before, but it's just intended to be an overview of some of the basic information and legal requirements applicable to muds in general and directors in particular, and then just some recommendations. I've been doing this for about 30 years now, and just kind of based on that experience, recommendations that you're free to adopt or ignore. Have any of you served on a mud board in the past? Besides? Or any other public entity? Because some of what we'll talk about is very similar to all public entities.
Town council.
Okay, well then, you'll be familiar with some of this, Ben, for sure.
Parks and Rec.
What's that?
Parks and Rec.
Committee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is a little bit different than that. So you wouldn't be an official serving in that capacity. But many of the requirements we'll talk about are equally applicable to towns and counties and other local governmental bodies. And I'm gonna try to go fairly fast. I'm sorry, this is a pretty broad presentation, so I may move through some things. And I would welcome and encourage you guys, if you want to drill down into more detail, just interrupt me, and hopefully it'll turn into a back-and-forth conversation, which is typically more interesting than me just lecturing you guys. So feel free to interview. I'm gonna talk about some of the critical statutes that apply to the board itself, in particular, the Open Meetings and Public Information Act. I'll then address the Conflicts of Interest laws. We'll talk about some of the board policies and its bylaws that were previously adopted, and I think these have been made available to you outside of this meeting, and if you haven't done so, it'd be a good idea for you to definitely review those. Talk a little bit about some financial matters at a very high level. I won't steal Stephen's thunder. Little bit about boundary matters, because it comes up every once in a while with respect to serving some new properties that are not located within the district, and then just some general governance recommendations. And Lori has a copy of this PowerPoint presentation, so it's yours, and I'm sure she can email it to any of you, if you guys want it. If you're not familiar with it, I know, Ben, you will be from the town, the Open Meetings Act is a critical statute that applies to all public officials of every governing body of a local government entity in Texas. For your purposes, if it hasn't been communicated to you yet, you have a 90-day window to take the training course, and you must print a certificate before the end of that. Please provide a copy to Lori, so she's got that for the district records. She or my office can send you a link. The Attorney General has a course, it's very similar to an online defensive driving course, if any of you taken that. Not particularly interesting, but it'll give you an overview of the requirements under the Open Meetings Act, and there's also one for the Public Information Act. And again, you've got a 90-day period to complete that, so please get it done, print a certificate, and make sure the district has it in its records. Very high level, the general rule, all deliberations and actions by a quorum of directors must occur at a properly posted meeting. And just the general intent of the Open Meetings Act is that the public has the right to have notice of and to be present and observe every deliberation by a quorum of the Board of Directors. So that's the fundamental purpose and reason behind the Open Meetings Act. There are some statutory exceptions, the most common of which are social gatherings. If there's some type of social gathering at the country club here, and you guys happen to be there, that's okay, but don't have any discussion of district business. And then conferences and things like that, you're also, a quorum can be present there. But again, don't conduct or deliberate district business when you're at those types of events. Big topic that always comes up is kind of, you've probably heard the term "walking quorum", and what happens if there's not a physical quorum of you present, but Director A speaks to Director B, who speaks to Director C. Although it didn't happen in real time, the result of that is that a quorum of board members deliberated, and therefore, for many years, that was considered a walking quorum and a violation of the Open Meetings Act. In 2019, finally, there was a case that went up all the way to the Court of Criminal Appeals, and they said, no, that's unconstitutionally vague. If Director A didn't know that Director B was gonna speak to Director C, you know, that shouldn't be a criminal violation under that, because there was no intent and he had no knowledge of that. And so very quickly, in response to that, the legislature met, and they tried to address those vagueness concerns, and now, if you look there, and I won't read it, but there's a knowledge and an intent. So if Director A knows that Director B is going to speak to Director C, still a walking quorum, it's a criminal act, it's a violation of it, but if that notice and that intent isn't there, then it does not constitute a walking quorum. So again, be very careful, always err on the side of caution. But you'll hear that phrase a lot, and just be careful if you ever deliberate or talk outside a meeting. It's okay for Director A and B to speak, I mean, they may want to exchange ideas, but if it's ever done to reach a final decision or circumvent the act, or know that it's gonna be done for purposes of reaching a decision, that's a walking quorum, and that's a violation of the law. Lot of times, the question comes up about committees. Less than a quorum of board members is present at a committee meeting, is the Open Meetings Act notice requirements applicable to that? And the answer is no, as long as it's truly an advisory committee meeting. But if the board just rubber stamps the actions and decisions of a committee, then the law's pretty clear that those committee meetings must be posted, as if it was a meeting of the full board, because again, the public has the right to observe the deliberations. And if the substantive deliberations are taking place at the committee level, and the full board is just rubber stamping that, you need to post those committee meetings. Notice requirements, 72 hours notice. In the past, it always had to be done on the bulletin board and at the county a couple of sessions ago, rather than the county posting. If the district posts on its internet website, that's sufficient, and you don't need to post at the county during that. You cannot change your agenda during the 72-hour notice period. There are some exceptions in the event of true public emergencies, where there's just a two-hour notice requirement, very rare, and it must be an absolute emergency. Lot of times, the question comes up, and just so you know, from a procedural perspective, Lori puts together an initial draft agenda, and we work closely, we circulate, and it goes through a couple of iterations before it's finalized and before you guys see that. A big part of it is deciding how much detail and notice to put into the agenda, and the agenda has to provide reasonable notice to the public of the subject matter of the deliberation. So if you had an item that just said, "public business," that's inadequate notice, that's not proper under the Open Meetings Act. But instead, it needs to provide general notice of the topic of the discussion. And there's a long line of decisions by the Attorney General, where the AG has found that the greater the level of importance, more specificity is required in the public notice. And so the classic example is if personnel action may be taken with a low-level employee, you can have general notice about actions with respect to the employment of individual employees. That's very general and vague, it puts the public unnoticed that there'll be personnel matters. However, if it was a general manager, or in the case of a town, if it was action related to the chief of police, something like that, then specific notice has to be provided that it relates to the general manager, it relates to the chief, because there's much more public interest and importance with respect to the higher level. So the more important it is, and the greater the level of public interest, that agenda needs to provide greater specificity. During citizen communication, sometimes business will come up, a resident will stand up here and we'll make comments about something that's not on the agenda. You guys are authorized to provide specific factual information in response to that. Excuse me. You can also recite existing policy, or you can also discuss whether to put the matter on your next agenda, or more typically, generally, you would say, please meet with our general manager outside of the meeting, he'll talk to you about that and try to address your concerns. You cannot substantively deliberate those matters that are not on your agenda. Executive sessions. I don't know, have, they've gone into executive session since the election, the new board? So the Open Meeting Act recognizes that there are certain matters that the board should be able to deliberate in private and without the public present, the most common of which is the attorney-to-client communications. Purchase of real estate, if you guys were deliberating how much you were gonna pay for property, obviously, that would really impair you. You can do that privately. And personnel matters, you can generally discuss in executive session. Final actions cannot be taken in executive session, but you do have the right to deliberate when authorized. In all cases, whatever you discuss in executive session must be identified on the meeting agenda. Generally, and this district will try to identify every topic that's discussed in executive sessions. Other districts, we generally say the board can go into executive session to deliberate any matter on this agenda, and either way, it can work. And again, the presiding officer, Kevin, needs to announce the time, which agenda items we're going into executive session and the basis to do so. Most commonly, it's to seek legal opinions and advice.
You have Kleenex down there, Tony?
Excuse me?
Kleenex down there.
Trace me, Emmy. Or toss it.
That must be my allergies, I'm sorry. Usually cedar.
Thank you. The board can have employees and other participants participate in executive session when their presence is deemed necessary, but you need to be careful about that. You can waive your attorney-client privilege by doing that, so be careful if it's not a party representative. And that's pretty rare. Usually, it's gonna be your general manager, your lawyer, and then just the Board of Directors. Sometimes, the question may come up, a board member doesn't think, let me say it this way, if a topic comes up in executive session that's outside the scope of what was announced to go into executive session, or what was on your agenda and announced, part of my job is to say, we're straying, and we need to get back and do it. I would encourage each of you, because you should not participate in executive session if it's not a proper matter, to say, board, we're getting a little bit off-topic here. So it's my job, but it's also your job. If you don't think that the executive session is proper, then ultimately, you have two choices if the board won't listen to your concerns. One, just leave executive session, or secondly, say, okay, Corbett, give us a written legal opinion that we can rely on to do this. So those are your two options, if you're not comfortable. We limit discussions to the subject matter, so I don't think this will ever arise, but I want you to be aware of those options to you. A certified agenda or recording is required for all executive session discussions, those are not public. And the one exception is the attorney-client.
Tony, before you leave executive session, could you make any, make comments on taking things outside of executive session and distributing them to the public?
Yeah, that's improper. Everything that's done in executive session stays in executive session, and there's some statutes directly on point, so you cannot disclose those discussions with third parties. You would waive the attorney-client, number one, so it could be very damaging to the district and its interests, but there's also laws on point that prohibit that. Terms of enforcement, any action that you take, if the notice wasn't proper, can be voided. There's also criminal and civil penalties, depending on the nature of the violations. The voided issue can become a real issue in the employment context, because if the board terminates an employee, but notice wasn't proper, that action is void, so theoretically, it can be cured in the future by the board, again, posting it properly and taking action. But since the original action was void, that person is still on the payroll during that intervening period. So it's a real gotcha, particularly in the employment context. Telephone calls, the board cannot participate in a board meeting by telephone. Question comes up all the time, and the answer is no, you can't do it. You can, up to two of you, a quorum has to be physically present, up to two of you can participate in an audiovisual meeting, as long as we have monitors where the public can see the facial expressions of those persons who are participating remotely. And we will include special language on the agenda, which is required for any audiovisual meetings. During the COVID emergency period, we were able to have Zoom-type meetings, that's no longer possible. Just in summary, the public has a public comment. In the past, whether or not there was public comment at meetings was discretionary. Most governmental entities did it, but it was not required. Now, it's mandatory. You must always allow public comment for every meeting of the Board of Directors. Do not discriminate between members of the public, but you do have the authority to adopt reasonable rules. We don't have enough comment here where it's really necessary, but sometimes we impose time limits and other things, but it's been a long time since we've had a lot of public comment here. Minutes, just generally identify the subject matter of the deliberations and any action that's taken. Some governmental bodies have a very high level of detail in the minutes describing what statement is made by individual directors, which is fine, but I'm more of the camp that the purpose of the minutes is to describe the subject matter and the action taken, but that's discretionary with the board. Final cautions, emails, be careful, very similar to the walking quorum thing, if you guys start sending individual emails, it's possible for a decision or deliberation to take place between a quorum, can be a real problem, so I urge you to be very, very careful with emails. Same thing goes for social media. The Open Meetings Act allows governmental bodies to have online message boards, which is a way for governmental officials to communicate to the public and each other, where the public can see those. It was enacted in order to protect you from inadvertent Open Meetings Act violations. But if you don't use a message board, and a quorum of you ends up deliberating on Facebook or whatever, again, you can inadvertently walk into an Open Meetings Act violation, so be very, very careful. We already said telephone calls can be a real problem, and don't circulate documents and reach a decision that way outside of a meeting. Public Information Act, again, there's a training requirement, unless we've designated a public information officer, which is probably you.
Yeah, and they've all taken all the training.
Oh, they have? Okay, great.
They're all good.
I may go along pretty quick here. If you guys have taken the training class, you're familiar with these statutes. Records Retention Act, all of the district information, as is true for all local governments, is subject to retention requirements. The State Archives and Library Commission has adopted records retention schedules. Every type of information you can think of, there's a retention period for those. In some cases, it can be destroyed as soon as it's administratively convenient, in other cases, it's permanent. So the district has adopted a records retention schedule, and all of the information is subject to that. This also applies to your information, and so just be careful that we don't ever destroy district information, except when authorized, under the Records Retention Act. Most of the information, the district staff will take care of destruction and retention, but you should be aware that it's out there if something comes into your possession that staff doesn't have. Conflicts of interest laws, the- Conflicts of interest laws, the most substantive one is Chapter 171 in the Local Government Code. It applies to other governmental entities too. And it was intended to codify, from a statutory perspective, conflicts of interest. And the purpose of it is to really identify when an individual public officers, officials, private interest conflict with their duties as a director. And Chapter 171 requires disclosure of that conflict of interest and requires that the public official abstain from any participation in the discussion and the vote. This chapter applies to officials, which is each of you. It does not apply to staff, including your general manager. We're, well, in a minute, we'll talk about another statute that applies to them. In this case, which again requires a total abstention from participation and disclosure of the conflict by an affidavit, the official must have what's called a substantial interest in the business entity or the real property that's the subject of deliberation by the board. And the decision or vote taken by the board must have a special economic effect on that business entity or real property different than the effect on the public. On the screen is the definition of what is a substantial interest in the case of a business entity. I won't go into that. And then, here's the substantial interest in the case of real property. It applies to your family members also. And then, what's a critical issue is will the board's decision have a special economic effect on that business entity or real property different than the effect on the general public? So, just to make that point, when you guys discuss and deliberate your tax rates, that affects the general public equally. That will not have a special economic impact different than the general public. It will affect your business if you have one, but it's the identical effect as it is on the general public. Contrast that where if you decide to approve a contract with a vendor and you guys have an ownership interest in that specific company, that decision on that contract doesn't affect the general public in the same way it affects that entity. It has a special economic effect. Or if you guys made a decision about where to locate a pipeline and you decided to put it through property that you personally own, that has a special economic effect on your real property different than the effect on the public. So, that's what the statutes intended to get at is to separate those two. In the case that it does have the special economic impact, you must file it an affidavit and you must abstain from all participation. Again, some examples, if the director or one of your family members has an ownership interest in the business entity from whom we buy goods or services, or if the district was going to purchase real property that you own individually or your family member owns. If you made a decision with respect to pipeline location and that improves the value of property. I mentioned purchase of computers. I represent an entity where one of the officials worked for Dell and the district was purchasing Dell computers. So, he filed an affidavit and stayed from that discussion. It's a criminal offense. It's a big deal. So, make sure when in doubt, you file the affidavit and abstain. Chapter 176, the legislature has made the decision that there's other conflicts of interest that are not a substantial interest that require abstention, but we do want the public to be aware of those conflicts of interest. So, in this case, there's a disclosure requirement, but you can still deliberate in the subject matter of the discussion. In this case, it applies to employees who exercise discretion in the planning, recommending, selecting, or contracting with the vendor. So, this conflict of interest law will apply to Alan, Stephen, anyone else that participates in these contract decisions in addition to the board. So, it's broader in scope, although the required actions aren't quite as broad as Chapter 171. It applies to existing or proposed contracts. So, some, you may have a long-term existing contract, but if this conflict then arose, it must be disclosed. There's conflicts disclosure statements that have to be filed by the board and put on the district's website. And again, on the screen is the criteria that triggers that disclosure requirement. Not an abstention, just a disclosure requirement. And there's a seven-business-day period for making that disclosure. And again, the district must put it on its website. Also, misdemeanor, termination. So, it's a big deal again. An example is another district I represent, one of the officer's contracts with an accountant for bookkeeping for her company. The board considers some matters related to accounting services to, with that same company. It didn't meet the substantial interest test, but it was, did meet this threshold. So, that director had to file a conflicts disclosure statement and put it on the district website. Nepotism, I'm not going to spend much time on this. In general, we cannot retain, you cannot retain any of your close family members. It relates to relatives of yours. It does not technically apply to employees, although most entities have nepotism policies to address employee nepotism issues. Significant consequences for violating the nepotism statutes, fines, and missile, official misconduct. And it's one of the few reasons you can actually be removed from office. Bribery, the penal code will apply to you if you intentionally or knowingly accept from another benefit in consideration of your decisions. The penal statutes I'm about to talk about, including this one, to me, they all fall within the scope of common sense. And it all boils down to do not personally benefit in connection with your role and service as a director. You should not be receiving personal benefits in a personal or business context for any of the decisions you're taking. It's very hard to disprove, kind of prove a negative, if you will. And people can connect dots that perhaps shouldn't be connected. But do not accept the benefit in return for your decisions. And do not accept gifts from persons who are affected by your decisions. Again, this is a felony violation. Over the years, I've had a couple of situations where directors have been accepted unknowingly gifts from folks. It's a big deal. So, again, do not benefit from your decision-making from anyone affected by your decisions. Yes?
Tony, let's say somebody accepts a fairly expensive ticket to a playoff game exceeds the limits. Who's the enforcing authority? How would it get reported typically? And what percentage of people get thrown in the husskell for it?
It's typically complaints filed with the county attorney. And the county attorney can bring a criminal enforcement action for it. And misconduct with public officials is kind of a favorite topic for newspapers. So, when those types of complaints are made, it typically lands on the newspaper. And it's a way for district attorneys and county attorneys to score a lot of points with the public. So, usually, it happens through the county, gets in the newspaper, and it kind of rolls from there. When I first started practicing law, there was a district, it wasn't my client, fortunately. But a district decided to conduct its board meetings in Vegas. And so, they started flying to Vegas. And it's not bribery, of course, but it was misconduct. And they were all removed from office. But that was, you know, a lot of this comes down to common sense. And that's another example of, you know, you guys should know that on the taxpayer nickel, you don't fly to Vegas on a monthly basis and stay in a hotel room. But they didn't know that. And they were all removed from office and it was a big deal. Lots of newspaper coverage on that one. Acceptance of gifts, again, you know, and contractor may get a big business on a pipeline project. Said, thank you very much, board, we appreciate it. And just trying to send you a Christmas bottle of wine or something like that. Well-intentioned, not trying to influence you. Maybe it was even after the fact, say, thank you, but I can't accept this. Exceptions, director fees, very small items worth less than $50, food and lodging as a gift. Generally, I will tell you, I wouldn't even go accept the, try to stay under the exceptions. I would just say, thanks, but no thanks. It's just not worth it. Again, criminal action violations if you do this. Abuse of official capacity, so, and this is a broad one. And it again applies to public servants. So, it's not just directors, it's also employees. And it applies to someone who misuses government property, services, personnel, or anything, a thing of value belonging to the government. A few years ago, there was an employee of this district who asked that other employees assist him in connection with constructing some improvements in his apartment. Well, he misused this and the board took action and that person lost his job as a result of that. But there was someone who was well-intentioned, but didn't use very good judgment and took advantage, used his authority as a GM to have workers assist him on a personal project during office hours. And he was terminated. And he could have been prosecuted. Again, depending on the value of the property. Another example would be if you got the bobcat from, you know, the district and decided to improve your backyard and, you know, do personal improvements. That would be another example of misuse of, in your official capacity. Again, I think it's common sense, don't benefit from your role as a director. It all comes back to that. Here's an org chart of the district. I think you guys are all aware of it. But I think it's important, and I see it over and over again, the dynamic and the relationship between the board and staff can be a real challenge by districts. And there's this sense at the board level, and it's accurate that you were elected by the public. But at the same time, there's a staff that's been hired to carry out the day-to-day business. And there can often be a lot of tension between there. And ideally, every district has policies in place to address that tension and make sure things go as smoothly as possible. But the key duties of the director are obvious, directors are obviously to set policies and to oversee management, but not to carry out the day-to-day business. That's why you do have a staff and a general manager. You adopt a budget, you levy taxes each year, you establish rates to make sure you can fund your budget each year. You retain consultants and you approve contracts. So, that's really the board's role at that high level. You do have fiduciary obligations for the public funds. So, you need to make sure that there's procedures and policies and controls in place. You designate the depository for funds. And then, by policy, you can delegate certain authority to, particularly to the general manager. Just want you to know that the board is authorized to act as a board, not individually. So, any action by the board requires approval at one of those posted meetings we talked about by a majority of the directors. So, does, let's say Kevin asked the president of the board of directors, does that give him authority to approve contracts independent of the rest of the board? And the answer is no, unless the board specifically delegated that authority to him. Each of you are one of five, there's a reason there's five of you. It's an odd number just to make sure that ultimately, there'll be a decision by a majority. But you don't have the authority to act individually without specific delegation. All decisions and actions require approval by a majority of the board. You do have the authority to, and you are charged with managing, overseeing management of the affairs of the district. But to carry out those day-to-day functions, that's why you retain the general manager and have operators and staff. Your GM, again, is responsible for the day-to-day management of the service and operations. He's in charge of personnel matters, oversees regulatory compliance, implements those directives and policies that you set, manages contract negotiations that are presented to you in the construction of facilities. From a legal perspective, you have the authority to delegate to your general manager as much authority as you want to manage the affairs of the district, subject only to your orders. There are some districts who pretty much turn over everything to the GM. And there are others who are much more involved. And each district needs to find that balance that both sides are comfortable with. If there's too much board involvement, it can really interfere with the efficiency of the organization in carrying out its business. If there's not enough, then there's potential financial exposure there and risk. And again, you need to make sure you carry out that fiduciary obligation. But every district should manage and define the scope of the GM's authority. And you guys, through policies and your bylaws, have done so. In terms of just challenges, again, when individual directors get involved in day-to-day business, it can be a challenge because they may provide directives and communications differently than what the board is or the rest of the board may not be aware of that. And particularly, if individual directors communicate with individual staff and not through the GM, then it can create some real challenges. So, just be careful with that. Some districts really, really have a hard time with that issue. Again, the directors are very well-intentioned because they were elected, but it's also a business organization that needs to function properly. Again, it all comes back to adopting policies. So, everyone's on the same page about what is the scope of delegated authority and the scope of the individual director's authority. And the district's done so. Terms of critical policies, again, there's some bylaws out there that I think have been made available to each of you. It defines the organization of the board, the officer positions, the general powers of the general manager and the secretary, board meeting and agenda policies, and policies for director fees, travel reimbursement, and conflicts. In terms of critical board policies, every year, there's a cash reserve policy where the board has established some policies regarding fund balances for different reserve purposes. And we always visit that in the context of each budget for purposes of it. And Stephen does a great job of informing the board where we are with respect to each of those cash reserves. The, every governmental entity is required to adopt an investment policy under the Public Funds Investment Act. And you're required to review that along with the individual investment strategies annually and approve one each year. And then, in order to carry out the individual affairs of the district, the board has delegated contracting and some individual expenditure authority to your GM. And there's dollar limits and other parameters in there for the scope of that delegated authority. But that allows business to be carried out on a day-to-day basis by your GM. Revenue sources, I think you're probably aware of this, but the two main sources are taxes and rates and fees. With respect to taxes, all ad valorem taxes must be approved by the voters. So, there's a maintenance and operation tax, which was approved many years ago. And I don't think we have, are there any tax bond authorization that's in effect that hasn't been used? I should have looked. So, in order for us to issue more debt to finance major capital improvements, if we wanted to use tax bonds, we would have to have an election to do that. The, a water district can issue revenue bonds without voter approval, but ad valorem tax bonds requires voter approval. In terms of boundary matters, again, when this district was created, it was approved with specific boundaries. From time to time, there'll be a property that's outside the district boundaries that desires water or sewer services from the district. Generally, we will annex that property into the district's boundaries so that they contribute taxes to the district's cost. In order to annex property, the landowner has to petition the board of directors. That, we need municipal consent if the property's in the town's corporate limits or ETJ. And then, the board will adopt an order approving that annexation and redefining the boundaries of the district.
Except in the case of the PIT.
Yep.
The PIT is outside our district.
Right.
You have an agreement that they pay the same rate as the district.
Yeah. So there is a service agreement between the town and the mud whereby, which establishes that the district would provide services within the pit outside the boundaries of the mud on substantially similar terms as provided to, in district. But the, there's funding where the, there's assessments levied by the town in connection with that. General governance recommendations. Again, transparency's a big deal. If the public thinks you're trying to hide something from them, it's almost impossible to recover from that. So I would urge you to err on the side of providing too much notice. Welcome public comments, even if you disagree with them. Explain why you disagree with them. Use your website to provide communication. But over and over again, if the public thinks something's being hidden from them, it's very, very difficult to recover from that. And typically ends up resulting in an election where, where governance will change. It's not your decision to decide what to share with the public, except as, with very few exceptions, the public has a right to all information. There's some attorney-client communications that are confidential, but with very few exceptions, it's public information and they have the right to it. And then again, if you don't share it and they, they think you're hiding something, it's, it's, it's a tough situation. With open rec, public information act requests, I'd urge you to be prompt. It's easy to play games with requesters in terms of asking for clarification and otherwise, but that can really lead to some anger. And generally, just, it's better just to produce the information, even if you ask, provide more than, than they've asked for. Treat requesters equally. You don't have the right to ask and decide why people are asking for the information. It's their information. And having said all that, and, and with those recommendations, there's some people that you'll never appease, and that's just the, the nature of personalities. So, but generally, over the years, I've found that if you provide information to the public, it will go much better than if you try to withhold information. Even if you disagree with commoners or people who criticize you, be, express appreciation for them, explain why you don't agree with them. Generally, discourte, discourtesy creates conflict and anger and, and can really interfere with the day-to-day business. Be careful with your emails and texts. You may be sending it to an individual constituent or to each other, under the assumption that that's not going to be shared with the public. That is public information. And, you know, I, I call it the newspaper test, but don't send something in an email if you don't want it published on the newspaper. So, because it, it is public and somebody can ask for it. So if it's not something you're comfortable with, you shouldn't put it in an email. Fiscal prudence, I think this is obvious, but, you know, you can lose public confidence if you aren't spending the public's money on a conservative basis. You know, try to avoid the lavish expenditures and spend the money on things that ultimately benefit the customer. From the taxpayer's perspective, you're spending their money. I've already mentioned that you should welcome citizen communication, and now they have a statutory right to provide comments at, at meetings. To me, this kind of really comes down to two things, all of ethics. Don't personally benefit. Use common sense in connection with your service. And whatever you do, remember that it's public and don't say or do something if you don't want it on the newspaper. And I think if you follow those three doctrines, you'll be well served. That's all I've got.
Hey Tony, on open records, there are scenarios or cases where the information requested will have to be sent down to the AG office for determination whether it can be released or not. And we don't have any control over that. We have control of what the requested information is, but once the AG makes a decision.
So the Public Information Act generally is all information is, is public. But then there's a host of specific information where they've said it can be withheld. But with very few exceptions, you don't have the right, the, the district doesn't have the right to unilaterally withhold it. Instead, we have a, a specific timeframe for submitting a request to the Attorney General. We include the request doors, request for public information. We include the information that's responsive, that we believe is not subject to disclosure. And the Attorney General will make a determination whether or not it must be disclosed. So with very few exceptions, what are called prior determinations, we must go through that process. So there's a very specific timeframe. Attorney-client communications are accepted from disclosure. But again, we must furnish those to the Attorney General and they'll make a decision and confirm for themselves that it is for the purpose of requesting legal advice and opinion. So they don't trust the governmental body to make the decisions for itself. The Attorney General has to make those decisions. Information about the purchase price of property before the decision's made. Some draft documents, draft policy documents can be withheld, but in all cases, we have to go to the AG. In terms of prior determinations, so now, like utility usage information, we can withhold that without going to the Attorney General. And there's a few minor exceptions, but almost in every case, we have to go to the AG. And there's a very specific timeframe for us to do it, or we waive our right to withhold it. So as a practical matter, when Lori gets a request for public information, she will send it to me, we'll talk about it. And if it's something that goes to the AG, we'll bring in Alan in the deliberation, and then we will prepare and file a petition. Litigation would be an example. You can't use the, the Public Information Act to circumvent litigation. So in that case, we would withhold it to make sure that a party goes through the proper litigation channels and doesn't try to get information through the Public Information Act. So we get a few of them, but it's not as common as it used to be. But generally, to withhold anything, we have to file a petition with the AG.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, before we do that, Mr. Rose, I just, since we're mostly new board, and I just want to introduce, this is the full, first full meeting we had, introduce the new board members for anyone maybe watching, recording or live. We have Director Rose, he's been on the board six years now. He was on the council before that. He was also part of the charter committee, is that right? You were on the parking wreck too?
No.
No, okay. Vice President Brewster, we actually served together on the council. He was on the council and he's been on a lot of planning committees throughout the town.
Including the first charter commission.
Right. Okay.
And charter review.
Okay, we have Secretary Treasurer Harper, you were on the anniversary committee, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and ZBA.
Oh, ZBA, thank you very much. And Tracy Hunter, Director Tracy, I've known her over 30 years now, I think, right? And you were on the parking wreck most recently, so thank you very much for your service. We have Alan, he's the general manager. Stephen is the money cruncher, he does a very good job at it. Lori is the district secretary. And Mike McMahon is the supervisor over the water and wastewater, is that correct? Operations manager. And he's been with the mud for 20 something years now, is that correct?
Twenty-four next month.
Twenty-four. Okay, those are the boards. It is, we'll call it 7:29 and we'll take a short five-minute break. Okay? Okay, it's 7:35 and we're back in session. And we're going to move to citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board or any other matters, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments and specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics or of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to the matters over which the board has authority. Do we have any speakers or?
No, sir.
Okay. Tony mentioned, you know, be open with the citizens. On this citizens' comment though, we're just listening, okay? We take no action, we don't ask the people, can you elaborate or something like, we just listen, okay? Everybody understand that? Okay. And Tony will be the first to, yeah, Tony will be the first one to go, can't talk about it. Okay. We're moving to reports and updates. Restaff reports. We have A, capital improvement projects, B, water operations report, C, wastewater systems reports, and D, finance reports.
Directors, a few capital improvement project updates. The waterline interconnect continues to move slowly, but we are making some good progress. We're roughly 82% complete with the project. Anticipated completion of that project is August. There is one apparatus out there that we're seeing some potential delays on, but we can, we still plan to be substantially complete. We're seeing a lot of delays in everything that we order nowadays, unfortunately. But there was one critical tie-in along Trophy Wood, no, Indian Creek, Indian Creek and the west side of the townhomes that was made this last week without, without a, any major interruptions or issues. So we were glad that that went according to plan. Also, the annual waterline project to, to take place along Creek Courts and Willshire, they have yet to mobilize, but they plan on mobilizing next week, the week of June 27th. We anticipate in August to September completion, although they do have contract days out to February. So we plan on trying to get that done prior to the school year starting. Lift station one, that one is also set, the contractor's set to mobilize the week of June 27th, next week. And that one does have a completion, fairly hard completion date in February. Lift station generators, we have that design currently in progress. My intent is to budget for those generators in this upcoming budget cycle. We'll advertise for that project along with the previously designed MBR piping improvement project at the wastewater treatment plant. And I intend to try to get those executed in October and begin construction on those. The one at the treatment plant, more than likely, will have a fairly long lead time for parts, what we anticipate. The South Lake Emergency Connection Project, we're currently awaiting further comment from some of the operational staff from South Lake. However, the preliminary design looks good for us. Initially, we had talked about this being a one-way feed. South Lake was wanting to look at doing a two-way feed. Hydraulically, it works in our benefit, but it does not theirs. In order for them to utilize it as a second point of connection, it would take a lot of hydraulic maneuvering and a lot of, a lot of staff effort to make it work. And the main reason is because the difference in their elevated, their nearest elevated storage tank and our storage tank on the east side of town is about 60 feet of difference. So as soon as we open the valve, we're actually going to have to put a controlling valve on it to minimize the amount of GPM that comes through at one time and the amount of pressure to make sure that we're not blowing lines out of the ground over on the western side of town where we have lower sections.
Their elevated is higher than ours?
Yes, sir.
It's on T W K.
About 60 feet. Their hydraulic grade line is about 60 feet difference. And that's with their tank being half-full.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So again, we'll have to make sure that we have monitoring valves in place to keep the pressures from getting too high. But if with just a 12-inch line, we can push anywhere between 5.5 and 20 million gallons a day through that pipe if we had to. So we, we anticipate, if we do get into emergency situation with a designed, or anticipated design with a 12-inch line, we can fill our east elevated storage tank in about 30 minutes and the west storage tank in about an hour. So it looks beneficial to us, still awaiting some final comment, but I don't anticipate South Lake coming back and having anything major. We already have money set aside and allocated for the construction side. There will be some more design fees with half that we have to bring forward, but I'm still waiting to see what Fort Worth says. Once South Lake provides their comments, we'll reach back out to the city of Fort Worth to meet with them, see what they require as far as monitoring, and then we'll probably bring it back to the board for consideration for final design.
So the difference is that we could take gravity feed from South Lake to us, but we'd have to pump it to them, is that correct?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And they would, they would essentially be pumping to us in theory, but because their elevated storage tank is so much higher, they would not even have, I mean, their pumps could be off and they could feed us as much as we could handle.
Process will have some method of maintenance as far as flushing the line out?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We're going to come up with a standard operating procedure for both the district and South Lake officials, and more than likely, it'll require one individual from both entity to be on-site to manage and operate this together. Okay? Our SCADA implementation, we, the design of the, the software itself has been, it's been tested and ran, if I'm not mistaken. Right now, we're waiting on licensing to be put back into the district's name. At one time, it was put into one of the vendor's names. We're trying to get all the software licensing put back into the district name. So as soon as we get that transition, we plan on bringing the new server on-site and beginning to implement that, implement that new technology. ERP Pro 10, we're still working with our existing vendor. There was a few tables that they didn't provide us, going back and forth a few times. But we're still currently on schedule for beginning of August, more than likely, it'll be mid of, middle of August before we can begin that transition process. But as of right now, we're still trying to meet that August billing cycle as our first round. Our biggest point of concern is communicating with everyone, letting them know what's coming, giving them enough time to prepare, know that they're going to have to go in and create a new login, what benefit it's going to have. So that's what our main concern is. So if it doesn't meet the August deadline, as far as notification, we'll push it out to September. Other than that, I can answer any questions you have on anything else.
And you mentioned before at the prior meeting that we're going to operate the system basically parallel.
Yes. The ERP? That's the intent, yes. But we are running out of time because our software platform ends when, Stephen?
Technically, the end of September.
But we've had enough delay from our vendor that we feel we can push that out a little bit further if need be. That's our intent. We, we've been keeping track of every month of delay that they've caused us. So if we have to, we can get Tony involved to help us make sure we get every week of, of time left available on that contract.
I noticed this past month, we did quite a bit of increase in water pumped, is that correct, Mike?
Correct, it's been hot, we haven't been getting the rain. I mean, obviously, you know, if you, anybody's just looked at the weather, we've hit some records, so we are pumping some water.
You should see my bill from last month.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Finance.
Not unless you all have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Well, see none, we'll move on to consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the board and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. In other words, if, we have two matters on the consent, A and B. If you want to remove one or have a question on them, speak up before we move on both of them. Everybody understand that? Okay. So agenda four, we have consider and act to approve the consent agenda. A is May 2022 combined financials, B, May 17th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. And I'll open the floor for a motion on this.
I move to approve consent, consent agenda items A and B as revised at the D S.
We have a motion by Director Rose to approve A and B. Do I have a second?
Harper seconds.
Okay. Secretary Treasurer Harper, seconds. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Any discussion first? See none? Okay. All in favor? Raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay. Move on to regular session. Agenda five, discussion and update regarding request for American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, that acronym, funds for infrastructure improvement projects. Yes, this would be you, Alan?
Correct. Correct. During the last meeting, if you all recall, Director Rose requested that we reach out to the towns of Trophy Club and West Lake to see if they had any funding available and if so, what that process might be. An email, the same email that was sent to Denton and Tarrant Counties was sent to both of those entities as well. And to date, I still have yet to receive a response from either one. However, I, I do know that Tuesday night's council, this past Tuesday night's council meeting, town council made a motion and chose to reject the request for ARPA funding because they would have, initially, they would have had to modify their previous action that they had taken. But anyways, they chose to reject that. So that's all I have for you all now on those ARPA funds.
Okay, on these ARPA funds, we went to the county first, Denton County or Tarrant, and they told us to go to the cities.
They said that they had nothing available and that we could request from any other entity that is part of the.
No, no, no other funds available going forward?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Correct.
Anyone have any questions on this?
Correct, I have yet to receive a response, yes.
Okay, there's no reason for any action, so we'll move on to agenda number six. Consider an act to appoint two directors to the Budget Committee. I, my personal feeling is the Secretary Treasurer should be one of them, so I nominate Secretary Treasurer Harper.
I have a point of information.
Sure.
I'd like to know on the, of the board of directors, who would like to be on the.
That's fine.
Budget committee.
Okay, does anyone wish to be on there?
I don't have any opposition to being on it, so, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have any opposition to being on it, Mr. Chairman, but.
Does anyone else want to be on it?
I'll nominate Mr. Brewster.
Okay, and I'll nominate Secretary Treasurer Harper. Any other nominations that makes life easy? Everyone show of hands to have Secretary Treasurer Harper and Vice President Brewster as the Budget Committee. Unanimous. Okay, item number seven, consider an act to appoint two directors to the Audit Committee. Do you have any nominations for the audit? Are volunteers to step up to the plate?
I'll volunteer.
Okay, we have Tracy Hunter, we need one more. Director Rose, I hear your name out there.
I did do that, I did do that last year.
Yeah.
And.
Experience. Yes or no?
Well, I'm really interested in being on the Strategic Partnership Committee, so if this doesn't.
You want to be on Audit Committee, yes or no?
Yeah, I will, I will join Director Hunter on the Audit Committee.
Okay, that's all. Okay, anyone else? I see no volunteers. So we have Director Hunter and Director Rose on the Audit Committee. Show of hands, all in favor? That's a little slow, Bill. Okay, unanimous. Director Harper and Hunter, I mean, Rose and Hunter will be on the Audit. Okay, discussion possible action regarding board meeting dates and times. Who?
I asked for that to be on the agenda. So sorry. I asked for that to be on the agenda. I was wondering, I would like to propose possibly moving from third Monday of the month to possibly second Monday of the month, or possibly on a Thursday, second or third Thursday of the month. There's other meetings that take place within town that possibly someone here or someone in the audience would like to participate in.
More important than our meeting?
That's, yes. No, no, President Carr, no.
Additionally, I'd like to, if you don't mind, I would also like to recommend keeping in mind that certain federal holidays that we take off are on Mondays, so it may be worth looking at potentially moving it to a different day of the week, whether it's Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
I'll propose Wednesday due to church.
I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Tuesdays are out for me.
Tuesdays are out? Okay, Thursday, I think our legal counsel is a bad day on Thursday, is that right?
The second, third, and fourth Thursdays every month.
Basically, Thursdays are out. Okay, so we have Mondays, we'd have to move for federal holidays.
Which we can do those when they conflict.
Thursday is out, is that, who's out on Tuesday? Bill, you're out on Tuesday?
I'm Tuesday, right down the calendar.
Okay, so Tuesday, you're bad on, or Wednesday is church day for people, right? Is anyone having a problem Wednesday?
No.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday?
No problem, no Wednesday problem. Wednesday, you're, Tony's looking at his calendar.
Most Wednesdays work, just as long as I know and I can.
Okay, so we have options of Wednesdays and Monday, from what I hear, is that correct?
Mondays, the second Monday would be a problem for me, I'm sorry.
The second Monday would? Okay. First Monday is a council meeting, and the third, I think. You're on Tuesdays now?
They're on Tuesdays.
I think the, the third week is still probably the best, it's just determining which day.
Okay, so we're looking at the third week. And we have Monday and when, and.
Monday is when we are meeting, so maybe the third Wednesday?
Anyone have a third Wednesday? Okay, so we have third Wednesday or Monday. Everyone for Wednesday? Show of hands.
I can do Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday, Tony, you said you're good on Wednesday, right?
I am, I'm going to have a problem next month, but after that, I can lock it in every month, so.
Ben? Wednesday good? Tracy, you good on Wednesday?
Good.
You good Wednesday? Same time, six-thirty? Same bad channel?
Bad channel.
Okay, all in favor of Wednesday at six-thirty, the third Wednesday?
The third Wednesday.
Yes.
That's easy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next is executive session. Okay, number nine, executive session. Pursuant to section five-five-one point oh-seven-one of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may consult with its attorney, that would be Tony, in executive session on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act to seek advice or counsel on legal matters involving pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers. A, consult with legal counsel concerning Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One versus Acadia Services LLC in the District Court of Tarrant County, one-hundred-and-forty-first Judicial District, Clause Number one-four-one dash two-nine-nine-three-five-one dash eighteen. B, as in Bravo, consult with legal counsel concerning the Strategic Partnership Committee and potential joint strategic planning with the town of Trophy Club. C is in Charlie, consult with legal counsel concerning electioneering and political signs on the fire department property. It is seven fifty-five, we'll call it, and we're going to move into executive session.
Well done, Mr. Brewster.
Just throw out those airline in. Okay, we're, it is nine thirty-six and we're returning to regular session. And we'll go through the executive session items. A was consult with legal counsel concerning Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One versus Acadia Services LLC in the District Court of Tarrant County, one-hundred-and-forty-first Judicial District, Clause Number one-four-one-two-nine-nine-three-five-one dash eighteen. Do I have any motion on that? We have a motion on A? That's the one, make a motion that we pay any additional legal fees regarding that case?
Brewster will second.
Okay, have a motion by President Carr, second by Vice President Brewster. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, and the amount, the amount was twenty-three thousand, what?
Twenty-three thousand, nine-hundred-seventy-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Okay, that's the amount, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, show of hands. Unanimous, okay. Steve is gone, but Allen, you can authorize those payments. Okay, executive session, agenda nine, B, as in Bravo, consult with legal counsel concerning the Strategic Partnership Committee and potential joint strategic planning with the town of Trophy Club. Do we have a motion on that one?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Director Brewster and President Carr.
Okay, we have a motion for nominations of myself and Vice President Brewster. Does anyone else have, want to be on the committee? I see none, okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Nominations don't require a second.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we appoint myself and Vice President Brewster to the, a committee to listen to the town. And that would include our legal counsel and our general manager, is that correct, Tracy?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And agenda item nine, C, as in Charlie, consult with legal counsel concerning electioneering and political signs on the fire department property, and we will take no action on that, on that item, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving back to regular session ten. Consider an act regarding items placed in executive, discussed in executive session, that's kind of premature, my bad. Okay, so we already talked about that. Eleven, discussion and possible action relating to strategic partnership and planning initiatives with the town of Trophy Club, including possibility relate, action relating to appointment of members to and future activities of strategic planning, we did that one. It's Vice President Brewster and myself, is that correct?
Is there any motion?
That one, that would require a motion, wouldn't it be? Yeah.
You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that President Carr and Vice President Brewster, along with legal counsel, the mud, general manager, take action under item number eleven and report back to the board. Harper seconds.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Rose, a second by Secretary Treasurer Harper. Any discussion?
No.
I see none, show of hands, all in favor? Unanimous, thanks for keeping me honest, Mr. Rose. Okay, twelve items for future agendas. Does anyone have anything to put on the agenda for next meeting?
Can I say something?
Sure.
So Tony is not able to attend the next meeting if we do it. Are we moving the immediate next meeting in July to Wednesday? Or are we going to have a Monday meeting in July and bring forward the resolution and the bylaws? Because we won't have.
To start the third Wednesday in August.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. That works out for you, Tony?
That'll work.
So it would be Monday, the eighteenth of July?
Yeah, and then we'll move, I'll bring that other stuff back on the next meeting agenda.
Which would be Wednesday, August seventeenth. Rick?
I'd, I'd like to try and get with the town, maybe prior to that meeting, so we can include whatever we have from the town, we can update the whole board.
Prior to the July eighteenth meeting?
Yes.
That's, my understanding is that was their intent as well.
Does anyone have any problem with that, Mr. Brewster?
No.
Okay, Mr. Rose? Mr. Harper?
I'm good.
Okay, so we'll try and, you can work out.
Get a follow-up item on this discussion topic for the July eighteenth meeting, correct?
Correct. Correct, and try and get the, the town meeting, maybe same day or something like that?
On the eighteenth?
Yeah, possible.
I'll do my best.
Then Tony can, you're going to be here the eighteenth, right? Yeah, okay, then we won't have to bring him up twice or get him.
Okay, I'll let him know, I'll let him know.
Sounds good, thank you very much. So that's, you got all that, Lori?
Yes.
Because I sure the heck don't know what we were doing.
Strategic Partnership Committee and also bring back the resolution and bylaws to change the time of the meeting.
Right.
That's all I have so far.
Yeah, and then have a, yeah, the committee will be another deal. Okay, thank you. Okay, thirteen, set future meeting dates, we already talked about July eighteenth and six-thirty, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, let's see, we can adjourn, right?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Anyone have anything else? Okay, it's nine forty-three and we will adjourn.